All right, public comment will occur during the meeting's public comment portion. You can raise your hand remotely or in person. Once acknowledged, please state your name and ward to include it in the minutes, and please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by policy B E D H. Are there any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda? These are new mics, we apologize.
Remove item number five. There will be no student report this evening, and 10D will just be for discussion only.
And then also, we're going to move items 10A and B. We are going to flip them, first of all, and then we're going to move them to ahead of the SAU leadership team update, so people can get back to kids. Everybody okay with that? Great. All right, so, um, public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? No? Is there any online?
There's nobody online.
Okay. All right, we will close public comment and reopen at the end of the meeting. Uh, correspondence, Mary?
Morning, no.
No. There was the one about the SAU building.
I thought so, but it...
Oh, it wasn't in there? Okay, so it should be in there, but we had a correspondence about the disposition of the SAU building. Thank you. Yes. Thank you. All right, um, so we need to move on to approving the public hearing minutes from January 8th.
Make a motion to approve the public hearing minutes from January 8th, 2025.
Okay, motion by MJ. Can I get a second? Second by Mary. Any corrections? I just have one question under, uh, opening. The very last line says $952,000 grants fund at 6:30 PM. I think that that...
Yeah.
I think that's the time that it started. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, uh, let's go to all those in favor of approving the public hearing minutes? Okay, unanimous, such as we are? All right, um, and then the public minutes.
Make a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes from January 8th, 2025.
Okay, motion by MJ, second by Mary. Are there any changes or corrections to those? Go ahead. Okay, great. Um, and I just had one more, which was under nine F, G, and H. So nine H, I guess, is where it is. A little thanked and acknowledged these donations, just add the date. That's all. Anything else from those public minutes? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the public minutes? Yes, okay. Thank you, everyone. All right, um, so we had a slight change of the agenda. We're going to move to what was previously 10B, which is the LHS student trip to Puerto Rico. You want to come up to the mic? It's for online, too.
Is there a special way to turn this on?
I think it's on.
Okay, um, so my name is Megan Wilson. I have been a Spanish teacher at Lebanon High School for the last four years, and I am working with a cohort of students from Puerto Rico, um, bringing them up here next month to have an exciting time at Lebanon High School. But next year, we are planning a trip to Puerto Rico, and it's actually been changed to February break, just because April Easter in Puerto Rico is harder for them to host. So, yeah, and I just have, if you have the proposal in front of you, but if you need any clarifications, I would love to, I'm here, so ask questions.
And I did speak, um, with Megan, and there is travel insurance that goes along with this proposal.
Yeah, and actually, I just, I just entered it. I'm not sure if...
We weren't able to print it out before, but...
Okay.
What would the cost be?
Um, it's only $41 per student, and it pays for up to $10,000 of, um, medical expenses and $50,000 for medical, like, evacuation. So, yeah.
Great.
It's reasonable, and hopefully we never have to use it. Yeah.
So I have a question. So this is kind of dubbed, is the same cohort of students that are going to be here this February break, or...
So, yeah, so, um, the 14 students from Pahardo Academy, I'm sorry, um, are coming up, and they're 11th graders, and so the idea is that, and I've been working with three teachers at, on the island, one really a coordinator for El Yonki National Forest, kind of a sister forest, basically, with Hubbard Brook, but there's a lot of sister forests in the United States. But, um, so I've been working with the coordinator there, and then I've been working with two teachers, Iria and Brazaida, and Brazaida works at Pahardo Academy, and so she's kind of taking on the lead of planning the trip in next year. And yes, we'll, they'll be coming up here, and then we'll be going down and visiting with that school for at least three of the seven days that we're down there, but we could be visiting Iria's, Iria's school, which is near Old San Juan as well. So it, it, it will depend, it will, it will evolve, but, um, yeah, and then we'll also be staying most of the nights at Research Station in El Yonki, which is kind of in between the two schools. So, yeah.
You have a question? Any other questions? Um, I, this sounds great. I'm excited about this, um, for a couple of reasons. One, because, yeah, that they're, um, having an exchange part, which I think is nice, but two, that, uh, there's actual science involved, which I like as well, so that's great. And you said that there, you haven't really advertised this because you're sort of looking for...
Guidance.
Guidance, and what kind of guidance are you looking for?
So I, I've asked Bonnie and Ian for more guidance, and basically I've, uh, publicized, or I've, I've gone to different classes and hit all of the higher level Spanish classes and also the, um, Honor Society for the Spanish, I don't know, for the Science Department, just because I, I want to bring the students who are really driven in science and driven in Spanish. And then, but I'm, so I'm basically moving down the ranks in Spanish classes and making sure that the students are still interested in, uh, partaking next year. So for instance, Sophie might be interested, I'm sorry, she might be interested in coming on the trip this, um, February, uh, to Hubbard Brook, and I'm not sure if that guarantees her a spot on the next trip, but it will, um, only help if she forms relationships with them. So, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and I, and I am limited to 12 students, uh, for next year, so I just want to make sure that it's fair as to who gets to come. I have to wait until, I mean, hopefully this will be a every-two-year trip, so every other year, they'll come here, and every other year, we'll go there. So, yeah.
Any other questions?
Minor logistic question, well, it probably seemed like major logistic questions to you. So there's no company involved, and so you're doing this with this Noelia Baez?
Yep, Noelia, and so I did this seven years ago.
Okay.
So it was successful, seven years ago. I was at Hartford High School. So Noelia and I have a, like, a working relationship, uh, and then Hurricane Maria hit, and Zika hit, and COVID hit, so it was one thing after the, and I also have a three-year-old and a four-year-old at home. So, um, so I, we postponed it for a couple of years, but Noelia is someone who, uh, I've already worked with, and, uh, she has contacts with a lot of science teachers, Spanish-speaking, obviously, science teachers on the island. That has changed a little bit over after Maria, but she knows a lot of, like, stellar science teachers as well. And Brazaida is someone new that I've just met in the last year and a half, but I actually got to meet her in person over Christmas break, and she's awesome, and brings up students, like, three times a year to Washington DC, and to, so she's not, this is not new for her either.
Very cool. It's, it sounds a little daunting on the national end.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it is, it is daunting on the organization end, but I am actually going to let them do most of the planning on the island. I'm doing a ton of planning right now. We're going to Crell on Friday afternoon. We're going to, uh, the Dartmouth Ski Way on Saturday morning, and then we're going to the Hood Museum, and then we're going to, like, see other research, oh, they're getting a tour of Dartmouth, and then we're, like, I'm, I'm doing a ton of planning right now, but I, I have some, some really good helpers on the island, um, that are going to help out with planning. So I, uh, so last time, I just called JetBlue, and, and, and basically, and Brazaida has a lot of experience with this, but you just, uh, like, six months out, uh, you can book, like, a group trip. Yeah.
Cool.
So...
Yeah, I mean, and I think the fact that it's, that you all are willing to take on the planning of it, which is great, because having it not be through a company gives you the flexibility of having it be much less expensive, which I appreciate from an equity standpoint, so...
Well, and also the, like, $50 a night at the Research Station is, that's a really high estimate, and so it might actually go down. Um, we, if we wanted to go around the island, uh, we could stay in Airbnb places that are obviously bedded, but that would cut down the, um, cost quite a bit as well for staying on the island. Yeah.
Yes, Tim has a question.
Just a couple of, I'm glad you've done this trip before at Hartford. Just in my head, I always think worst possible ability, so, um, like liability, I, I would, I guess I'd advocate that, uh, parents have to buy insurance.
Oh, yeah, no, that's, that's a non-negotiable. That needs to buy.
You know, I'm confident at a school event, um, people who work for the school are, are covered. But, um...
No, but if something happens...
You know, if something happens and whatever, um, like, when it's through a travel company, I, you know, I just have the comfort that I know that they have their ducks in a row in that way, so I'm glad you've done that before, and maybe I can talk to Hartford people to see if they had any other things they worried about.
Suggestions, yeah. And they actually didn't have me, I mean, I, I was, I was a brand chicken, a brand-new chicken, uh, seven years ago at this, and they did not have me buy insurance, but, but that was one of my first questions for...
Yeah, I mean, I'm just kind of betting in my head right now, I saw an email on this, but I didn't have a chance to think about it too much, so, um, maybe I'm, we can talk more about it, I guess, you know, I just think off the top of my head, I think. I, I guess I'm more, I'm wondering about meals, so like, what if there's a child with dietary restrictions?
Oh, yeah, I mean, well, well...
I mean, kids, because kids are cooking meals, you know what I mean? So I don't know if I trust my kid to cook a kid, a meal for someone else's kid. I don't know. So something about, and the other thing I'd wonder about is, is, uh, accommodations for, you know, male and females, like, are they...
Oh, yeah, so, uh, the, the, um, goodness, they're basically bunk buildings at the research stations, there's bunk buildings, and then there's a nicer version of bunk buildings, but we keep them separate, so males and females. And if we do choose to do Airbnb, it's very easy to do two houses of Airbnb close together, or, um, so George, Jorge Pardo, um, who was the others, another Spanish teacher, has said that he would seriously think about coming on this trip, so we can, yeah, split apart men and women pretty easily.
My daughters in both of those Honor Societies, but unfortunately...
I haven't been presenting too much to seniors, unfortunately.
Yeah, I think, um, just, we use these travel, um, travel insurances all the time, and the most robust one you can get, so like, just get, make, because even the most robust one is not that expensive, ultimately.
It isn't that expensive, yeah.
Yeah, and so it's not going to change your cost that much, but it will be more peace of mind, ultimately.
Absolutely, and I, and I think the one that I quoted was the cheapest, but I'm sure that there are some more that...
Yeah.
And are there other chaperones going with you from here?
Yeah, so Jorge Pardo, who I just mentioned, um, will also be with me. Um, and if I can't get Jorge Pardo, I'm going to ask another male teacher. It would just be nice if the person spoke Spanish, so that's my first choice.
Great, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Have a seat for a sec. Okay, so, uh, just need to approve this. So we need a motion to talk about this.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Lebanon High School student trip to Puerto Rico, February vacation of, um, February 2026.
Okay, motion by MJ, second by Richard. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor? Great, thank you very much, good luck.
Can I just add?
Yeah.
As far as chaperones and stuff like that, do we, I, I'm trying to think about policy or things like that, that we have, that if there is a trip like this that's not done through a company, or even the ones that are?
The ones, so the ones that are have their own stipulations. They often stipulate one person per every six kids, um, but it's their stipulations, not ours, we don't have a policy about that.
Is that something that we should have?
I guess, well, they have to go through the volunteer requirements and have all the fingerprinting and everything, background check, because they're, in essence, a volunteer, the kids? If, if someone from here, I guess, volunteered to be a chaperone that was not a school district employee, like a parent, is that what you're kind of getting?
No, I just, I just would not want to send my kid, he won a 15, going with one adult.
It's 12, right, 12 is your max?
Yeah, so I, I'm just, yeah, no, so I just, I mean, because this is the first one like this, that's, that's not sort of part of a company or, or notation about who might go, um, so I was just wondering, like, what we...
So we can look and see if there is a model policy for those reasons?
Tribute to field trip.
Right, and, go ahead. Come, you can come back to the mic. Sorry, I sent you away too soon.
Because I am leading a trip to Hubbard Brook, uh, next, uh, next month, and so for every eight to 10 students, and it is a range, eight to 10 students, there has to be a Lebanon teacher. So I have four doctorate students, five, um, adults from Puerto Rico, three of them are teachers, and I need to find another teacher who, amazingly enough, I found two other teachers who are willing to do this, um, at Hubbard Brook, but there needs to be another teacher or every...
For our own policy.
Yeah, for your own policy.
So that's what we get.
The policy is I J O A.
Thank you.
I J O A?
Yeah, so, and, yeah, so for every eight to 10 students, there has to be a teacher from...
Our school.
Or from Lebanon.
Right. Thank you, helpful. All right, great. Any other questions? No, thank you so much. Okay, that's going to take us to what was originally 10B, uh, 10A, which is the, um, LHS trip to France and Spain, and the, um, teacher for this is online. Okay.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I've been very sick, and so my voice is very scratchy.
That's okay, we appreciate you coming in.
Okay, um, so I am proposing a trip to Barcelona and, um, Paris, um, potentially with Provence in the middle, um, from, I think you have a, a copy of the proposal in front of you. From my knowledge, um, I've been at Lebanon, uh, for seven years, uh, teaching English, and I have led two trips, um, well, one is a participant, but one is a, a leader. To my knowledge, there hasn't been a trip to a Spanish-speaking or French-speaking country. This trip would be open to all students, um, as both English is spoken in both of the countries, and, um, I'm happy, it would be over April vacation, uh, which is when we did our Italy trip, and, um, I'm looking to, um, add some fundraising to help offset costs, um, through some fundraisers. Also, students can, um, they have their own fundraising pages, and when I did the trip to Italy, um, students who I wouldn't have expected, um, to be able to attend, did their own fundraising, and so it was a really wonderful experience, and, you know, had a lot of positive feedback from parents about how hard their kid was working to save for their trip. So cost is definitely an issue, um, the cost of the trip, uh, the different, uh, options in front of you include basically everything except incidentals, um, so flight, hotel, excursions, food, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I, I have a question. Since you're going to Barcelona and Paris, and you've, you, you said you speak some French, right? And then you have another French speaker, was there any thought about getting a Spanish speaker to come with you all?
The French speaker also speaks Spanish.
Ah, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I attended, um, when I went to Italy, I attended a training in Barcelona, so I'm familiar with all the places that we would be visiting.
Is there, is there, um, Sawyer's very interested in this trip. And so is there, um, so I see a minimum, but is there a maximum, or how do, if you have more interest, like, how do you, how are we going to manage numbers, or...
Yes, I would love to have more interest. Frankly, I have no idea what the interest would be. I haven't proposed this to anyone yet because I wasn't sure where it fell in the process. Um, basically, I would just add more chaperones. For every, uh, six students we have, their, uh, chaperone can go free for cost. So when we went to Italy, both myself and my chaperone were covered at full cost through ACIS, um, so we would just tack on more chaperones.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I noticed that this says ACIS provides personal websites to students to set up fundraising, like a GoFundMe page. I do believe under this policy, ACD crowdfunding is, means to school policy, is that a thing we, uh, have followed through on, or to change?
I would, I would argue that you're fundraising, and my daughter, when I went on one of these ACI trips, you're fundraising for yourself, so...
Right.
You set up a thing that says, "I want to go to France," and would you donate to it, and, um, it's not, Lebanon School District's not raising this money, the child, the child is raising this money for themselves.
Okay, do we make sure...
Yes, and, and a lot of, it was set up, you know, a lot of students would send it to family for grandparents, you know, for holidays, hey, can I have some money for my trip? That is what it was intended for, um, exactly, yeah.
Sorry, Richard, go ahead and say what you're saying.
I was just suggesting that we might need to, crowdfunding language more accurate.
Yeah, agreed.
Which I guess would be my question of, you know, is fundraising allowed, you know, could we do a point set of sale, like Zappala pie sale, to raise the money for students?
Yes.
Yeah.
Short answer, yes. That is allowed, because it's like raising for a club, for, um, a student club or something, so...
Okay, great.
And other, other trips have done that.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Are there any other questions?
So you have three different itineraries here. Are you expecting us to decide which of the three itineraries, or do you actually have a recommendation? How's it?
Sawyer, Sawyer thinks that you should go to the nine-day, Provence and Barcelona.
Now, I do have my favorites, uh, the first and the third one, uh, of course, the, you know, the more expensive ones, um...
But not by much for an additional day.
No, exactly, and the, what I, what I like about those trips is that they add a day to Versailles, which the other trip doesn't, um, I believe. Um, I put the three options in there because, um, at the time, I hadn't been able to contact ACIS to get information from them, and I wasn't sure about the timing of the board meeting and how this was going to get approved. Basically, I would just go through and decide on a trip with the ACIS, uh, director as to what makes the most sense for our, for our, uh, school. The other option that can happen, and this happened with our Italy trip, is that we didn't have, you know, a lot of schools that do this are much bigger than Lebanon, and so the original trip, um, may have to be altered because of size, or we may have to merge with another group with more numbers. And so the trip may alter slightly, um, but the cost never increases if that happens.
Okay, uh, I need a motion. Questions?
I'll make a motion, since my child. I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for a trip abroad to France and Spain in April of 2026.
Okay, motion by Wendy, can I get a second? Oh, Mary, sorry, sorry, hand. Okay, a second by Mary, are there any additional questions or comments?
So we'd just be approving any of the three, basically?
Yeah, I think we're just approving, okay, the trip.
Yeah, I think we'd approve just the France and Spain, and then, um, she would go through and work with us to get that itinerary, and we could share that.
But I guess, I don't know, maybe, I mean, is it, she said the price won't change, but is it short, because we haven't gotten confirmation back from them that these are the set prices, because I almost feel, would feel a little better if we capped the dollar amount of the trip that we're approving, rather than, at this point, since how we don't know which exact itinerary we're approving, we've never quite done it this way before, so...
At the moment, um, the, let's see, unfortunately, I can't give you a, um, I have, I have, I'm waiting to hear back from my ACIS rep, who is out of the country at the moment. My preference would be, um, the first proposal or the third proposal, depending, again, on their suggestion and, um, you know, his, I, I just, I would need to speak with him to confirm everything, but the prices would not change at this point, those are the set prices.
So what, ending? Are you asking for...
I don't think we ever...
We don't really approve a dollar amount, we usually just agree.
Well, we usually have the exact dollar price, and I guess that, that's kind of where my, my little bit uncomfortableness is, we usually have the exact dollar price, and I know that we've had some discussions in the past about the price of the trip and how equitable is it to all students, so that's why I'm just a little concerned about not locking in a maximum dollar amount, especially if they're known, but...
So would you...
I guess I, I would amend it to, I mean, approve the trip not to exceed a cost per student of $5,100.
Which would, yeah, which would be tell it more than all of the, yeah, okay. Do you agree to that amendment? Okay. Great, all right, that's the, that's the, we'll take a vote on the amended, um, motion. All those in favor? Great, okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, that brings us back to, um, the superintendent's update.
Good evening, um, I have a few things to share with you all, um, excuse me, tonight, today, Hanover Street Elementary hosted its Spelling Bee, where students were showcasing their talent and determination. Um, the competition was very exciting, it lasted over, uh, 20 rounds. Uh, so I wanted to congratulate all the students who got to participate in the Spelling Bee. Um, this Friday, Lebanon High School will be traveling to Concord to present for the New Hampshire School of the Year. Uh, we wish them the best of luck, um, and we're proud of their hard work, and so I will keep you posted, um, if we get through, um, that next selection period, which would be a site visit to the school. Uh, in other news, uh, the Take Flight program, um, is making incredible strides. Uh, we are ahead of our schedule with the plane build, um, and the team is working hard to move up shipment of parts. Um, we're thrilled to announce that we're working with the New Hampshire Aviation Museum that we may be able to begin a new plane sooner than we are, so, uh, they've never had a school, um, go through a plane fleet, um, with such precision.
That's awesome.
So it's really exciting.
I'm glad you added that in there.
Right, yeah. I added that piece. Um, I am, I've invited the students for the Take Flight program to come present to the board sometime in February, so we can hear about their experience. Um, next week, they are traveling to the New Hampshire Aviation Museum, speak to their board of directors, to talk about, um, excitement of the work, their progress, that next step, so, um, I shared with you, I'd like to publicly congratulate John Teigen, our, uh, high school science teacher for winning the Presidential Award for Mathematics and Science Teaching. Um, it's an incredible accomplishment. Um, also news with the high school, we're looking to expand our STEM internship opportunities, so we are looking, um, at other organizations, including Dartmouth Health, um, and, it's Novo, Novo Nardis, thank you, to strengthen our community partnerships, um, and our student experiences, so that's really exciting. We will have more information, um, on that, and especially as students, um, for selection. Last week, we held our first community planning group for the strategic plan. Um, the group discussed the process, started looking at connections, um, and how, what, identified what we want our students to know and do with our current vision of a graduate. Um, we're going to next move into building the strategic plan by looking at assets, identifying barriers, and selecting goals. So I am going to start out, um, sending out regular communications on our progress on this initiative, and then I am going to, uh, work with IT on our website, so we can start putting that in for, so, uh, pretty excited about that. Finally, uh, we were recently informed that, uh, by the New Hampshire School Board Association, um, that the Title IX laws have been pulled back, um, so we are in communication with Jarman Wilson to discuss our next steps, um, in making sure our school administrators, um, are aware of the... in making sure our school administrators are aware of the change. I anticipate more policy. That concludes.
Any questions for Amy?
I just wanted to add something to your update, we had mentioned this before, but the public may have heard recently about the Power School data breach that affected lots of schools in New Hampshire, and we had said we were not affected. And the reason we were not affected is because, once we switched to Alma, our Tyler, our Director of Technology, had moved all of our Power School information to a server that can only be accessed internally, not externally. So we, our data was protected because he took proactive steps to protect it all. So I just wanted to thank him for that. Very grateful for that. Anything else for Amy? Okay, great, that takes us to the Business Administrator's update.
First, real quick, I have the budget, the default budget, and the warrant that is ready for signatures. So if you can throw your John Hancock on here before we leave. The timeline on that is, I talked to Diane today, who's our school clerk, and she's planning on posting these as soon as tomorrow, so.
And is it okay with seven signatures?
Yes, we need a majority.
Okay.
So, seven's great. And then the expenditure report, I put a little summary in there. I don't, there's really no surprises that I can think of to tell you about. Right now, we're a little bit more expended this time now than we were this time last year, but you can see it's, I don't know, 7.7%. So I think we're doing okay. I did want to mention, I talked to Ben just a little while ago. I did want to mention that we actually have, as of.
Ben Nester.
Ben, sorry, yeah. We have a very expensive special ed or district placement that we have to, looks like we're going to have to pay for. I'm going to get the exact total, but it's going to be enough that I'm going to come to you and ask if we can take some money out of the Special Ed Cap Reserve Fund. Probably, over the course of a year, it's like $400,000. So I would probably recommend we do half for the rest of this year, whatever the total is. Depends on when this person gets in and stuff. And then that, that rest in the next fiscal year. So it was sort of, as I said in there, sort of tentative, but I think, I think we need to do it based on that. So, and I thank the board for having, and the voters for having the foresight to have a fund set aside for, it's really unexpected, out of nowhere. If we didn't have money set aside, I don't know how we'd pay for $400,000, so. Just want to let you know that, probably.
Does that mean there's an additional $400 that we haven't budgeted in for next year?
This case is, as Ben wants to correct me, this case is not budgeted anywhere this year or next year, because it's as of this week.
So the answer is yes, but we'll have to see what happens, we don't know going forward, so.
Student remains in that place.
Is there?
Right. Things change all the time, though, so like, when does a person actually get in? Do they change placements in the future, so?
Is there a cap?
Cat, spend aid, that Ben can probably address how much he de paid that we could do from this year, roughly about $85,000?
When we report our special ed expenses to the state under DUE 25, there's a formula at which you get paid back. That's what the, used to be called catastrophic aid, now it's called special ed aid, is. And the number that Ben gave me was about, I think, $83,000, if that goes through. Other than that, the cap, the only cap there is, is if a student is court placed, then we are limited in how much we have to pay. But this is not that.
Right. Okay. Is that all that you want?
That's all I wanted, thanks.
Anybody have any questions for, additional questions for Tim? Okay. All right, that brings us on to our DDECIA update.
Hi, everybody. I just have a brief update for you this evening. I'm pleased to share an update on recent federal grant approvals aimed at fostering equitable access to education and training across our district. These initiatives reflect our commitment to addressing diverse needs of our students and staff. So among the many recent grant approvals, we've got a grant to support responsive classroom training. This is for our elementary teachers, they came up with this idea, it's a, and selected this social emotional learning program. It fosters a positive and inclusive school environment, and they'll participate in that training in June of this year. We have a CPR training initiative that we've received grant funding for. Last year, we deployed some grant funds to train the trainer. So Holly Mare, the nurse at Hanover Street, was trained to be a CPR trainer. And this allows us to bring in-house staff training that previously we had to send, outsource to outside agencies. In addition to training our staff, we've secured grant funding to support training for up to 50 Lebanon High School students, so we're really excited about that. In addition, we have funds secured for a pilot program to address financial barriers to drivers' education for some students. We have a digital learning tool that will support multilingual learners and striving readers with expanded access to audio texts. Funds to support a cultural inclusivity workshop, a spoken word poet will come and work with our students for a whole day in a workshop format. And finally, to promote access to a well-rounded education, funds were secured to provide a new volleyball net and also a new woodshop CNC router as part of our PE and industrial arts programming at LMS. That's just a small sampling of a larger grant package that we are moving forward, but we're proud of these efforts, a lot of them, the majority of them come from our educators, and are developed in response to demonstrated student need in the district, and are, again, no cost to the Lebanon taxpayers. Does anyone have questions?
Questions? So any of our grants that are tied to anything that might be seen as DEI? Seems like at the federal level, those might be in question in the last couple of days. Do we expect any disruption to that or impact?
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. There's a lot of action at the federal level with.
DEI?
Folks with certain job titles. I would say that's a question that we're going to look for answers for in the next year or two, but I don't anticipate that it'll directly affect the way that Lebanon deploys our grant funding, in part because we're very careful to make sure that when we design grant activities, they are in response to demonstrated need in the district. So we've really put procedures in place over the last three years that ensure we have, and NHED is also taking the leadership role in implementing these sorts of procedures for all New Hampshire school districts now, but it's an improved sort of data-driven pathway for all of this. So I think as long as we can turn to a demonstrated need and point to that to justify what we're doing, really, I don't think our initiatives will be under threat.
Thank you. Other questions for Karen?
Just as always, thank you for being vigilant about getting grant funding. We appreciate the efforts on behalf of the board, but also on behalf of the taxpayers.
Great, and we're always happy for the board's support in this regard. Thanks, that's all I got for you today.
Thank you.
Except for the next two items, which.
That's okay. Okay, so we're going to go to unfinished business first. And we need a motion to take BBBF from the table, because we tabled it for last, our discussion last, so we need a motion to bring it back to, take it from the table. Anyone want to make that motion?
Oh.
Just, just take it from the table, the actual, take it from the table. That's the name in here.
Policy BBBF.
Yeah. All right, take from the table, policy BBBF, can I get a second? Second by MJ, she's so excited. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to go on to the next.
No, you can go ahead, I mean, now that it's back, so, to take it from the table, yes, we got to do that first. Okay, so all those in favor of bringing it back from the table? Thank you, okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Okay, great, motion to adopt, can I get a second? Second by Richard, any additional questions, comments on this one? No? Okay, all those in favor of adopting policy BBBF? Great, thank you, and we thank the council for looking at it for us. All right, brings us back to what was originally 10C, Professional Development Plan, Master Plan, sorry.
I'm back, hi. I thought I would just briefly explain what a Professional Development Master Plan is. The Professional Development Master Plan is a comprehensive framework designed to guide schools and districts in providing high-quality, continuous professional learning opportunities for educators. It serves as the strategic blueprint to align professional development efforts with state standards, district goals, and individual growth needs for educators. It outlines our objectives and strategies, provides measurable outcomes, and also addresses the way that our professional learning efforts will tie into educator evaluation systems and data gathering in the district. We are required to write a new master plan by the state of New Hampshire and submit it to them every five years. So that process took place over the last year, you've got a timeline in front of you, actually, one month early in bringing this forth to you. The finalized draft is the work of the Master Plan Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Professional Learning Development Committee. The hard work was done by Sandra Brake and Paula Skumaker, two of our teachers at Lebanon Middle School, Laura Eldridge, the Chair of the PLDC, who works as a teacher at Mount Webb, Melanie Darone, a parent educator from Hanover Street School, and Dr. Bonnie Robinson and myself. We reviewed over 12 other districts' master plans. We reviewed the Learning Forward Standards for Professional Learning, on which our plan is based, and used a new, in the last five years, rubric for evaluation that the state will use to assess this plan. We feel pretty confident that this is comprehensive and revised to reflect the elements in the rubric. It was reviewed by the PLDC, the full PLDC, SALT, and the Unions in the fall, and the EC later in the fall, and now we bring it to you for your approval before sending it on to the state for their review. Happy to answer your questions.
And does the state potentially ask us to modify it, like?
Theoretically.
That hasn't been my experience submitting those, but.
That they will modify, oh, they won't?
It would be unusual for that to happen, but should it happen, we'll make some revisions and resubmit it.
Question, go ahead.
I just had a comment, on page 24, under the Appeals Process, number five. It swit, you were very clear in one through four that the appeals had to be within workdays, and then under number five, it just says five days. So I would suggest either making the language match workdays or calendar days, but not leave it ambiguous at just five days.
Well, since workdays is used throughout the rest of that part of the document, I will amend it to include workdays on page 24. Great suggestion. Other than that, I think it'll look great. Awesome. Anybody else, questions? Revisions?
Okay, all right, sounds good, so we need a motion. Okay. Okay, motion by John, can I get a second?
Should we say 2025 to 2030?
Yeah, 2025, 2025 to 2030. A second by MJ, any additional comments? No, all right, all those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. That brings us to the school calendar, which is just a discussion item at this point.
Thank you, so I am just asking, just for discussion, I put this together, actually, my team, Karen Dubois, along with the LEA, LSS, and LAG, Building Leadership SALT. We have two calendars here, page 61, which, option one. This reflects the proposed new LEA collective bargaining agreement with the change of the start date. Knowing that our collective bargaining agreement has not officially passed yet, we do have an option two calendar. I was going to suggest that we pass them both, and then we can remove one, although today I did speak with the LEA co-presidents, and they are interested in coming together with an MOU. By chance, that the contract doesn't pass, they would MOU for option one calendar. So next month, at our February meeting, I will bring calendar forward for a vote once the MOU has been drafted. My goal was to get the calendar out as soon as possible and to communicate that, because as you said before, our February and April breaks are changing, changing because the state of Vermont are going to one calendar, and they are moving back there. So now follow what the rest of the New Hampshire schools follow, both in February and April.
How does an MOU to an LEA agreement work?
It would just, they would come up to an agreement regardless if the vote is not, that they would allow the teachers to come back before August 25th. If you look at option one, that's the first.
Can we do that, though, without a vote?
We can just show an MOU on a calendar. If the calendar, if the LEA contract doesn't pass, we revert to their old contract. We would do an MOU to that. Wouldn't be signed until contract.
An MOU in an unsigned document, like that, seems like the MOU should be, either be definitive, not the default, that regardless of whether it passes, we agree to start school.
I guess I'm confused, because if we have to, the community, I've not ever had to approve an MOU to an LEA. That wasn't.
Actually, you normally wouldn't have to approve MOU typically, that would be superintendent could MOU to agree that, that we agreed this would be the start date.
We haven't, the reason why we didn't have to have anything like this before is because the start dates and end dates were always, like, they were agreed to, but that has been changed in this coming contract. So if we defaulted to the other contract, and we wanted to keep these same start dates that we have agreed to in a new contract, we'd have to have an addendum to something.
Yeah, so I guess I, I guess what I'm confused by is that when the voters approve the LEA contracts, they're approving the language also, I mean, they, they care mostly about the money, right? But they're also approving the language of the contract, true.
Right, this is, if it, MOU only goes into effect if the contract is not approved. That's what the.
I under.
It's when it reverts to the old contract, the LEA is saying.
You know, I understand, but I, I don't know how we can, but we can modify the LEA agreement without getting voter approval?
Yes. During COVID, we did MOUs.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to understand.
What's the question?
Wait, that doesn't seem.
Right, during all the school reopenings, during COVID, we had lots of MOUs to the agreement.
Agreements, okay.
For your accuracy, I actually, I actually think the voters are approving the money. The warrant article is all about money.
Okay, so it's not actually, so we're agreeing to the language of the contract, which we can modify, we just can't modify anything related to money.
Right, and we wouldn't modify anything but probably that start date.
Okay, I was just trying to understand.
But to piggyback on that, I guess I'm a little confused, because, so what they are asked, or what they're proposing, is that you would come back next meeting with a signed MOU that would say, in the event that our proposed contract does not pass, we agree to start school on this date.
First date of students.
The first day of students, and so then that, actually, that MOU would be signed by the next. And we could vote on the calendar?
Correct.
Okay, because it sounded like at first it was just an open-ended MOU that wouldn't be signed until something passes. And so I just want to make sure that the MOU is signed and in place.
Correct.
Reverting back to a different start date in the event that the contract does not pass.
So what we're really looking at is this.
Calendar one. Page 60.
We can ignore calendar two?
For now, yeah. It's to the extent that we can.
As long as, as long as we are good with the MOU.
Yeah.
Got it.
And so the other big difference, not difference, but in addition to the vacation days moving, is that calendar one, option one, has the two weeks of winter break as well, right?
Yeah, right.
I guess, can I have a question about, so just help me get the math there? Because that's, at first I was like, oh, well, under each calendar, the school and proposed graduate, the end date and the graduation date are the exact same, so I was like, where is the difference? And so it looks like it's the two days at Christmas, but the school day would only start for students one day later, is it because I also missed a professional development day at the beginning? Or why is there two more?
State your question, where are you seeing?
If you're picking.
Summer 22nd, 23rd.
I understand.
The old contract is 180 days, and the new. and the new contract, it's what?
The prior contract, the existing LEA contract is 185 workdays. The new one, if it passes, is 184.
But, okay, I'm looking at the student days, though. So why, if the students started on a Wednesday versus a Thursday? That's a one-day difference, but they're a two-day student day difference on December 22nd, 23rd. So why is there not a one day?
You can go, I know.
So how does the math math, is what I'm asking.
How does the math match with this year's calendar from an instructional minutes standpoint? Is that what you're asking?
I guess from a, right.
Yes, from, or from student days, sure. In an earlier version of this calendar, we actually had school finishing one day later on Friday. However, we realized that creates a problem with graduation. So graduation cannot occur more than five days earlier than the final day of school for the district. So if we finished school on June 12th, Friday, graduation would need to take place on Friday the 5th of June. After a pretty significant level of conversation, I came to understand the problems associated with having Lebanon High School graduation on a Friday. They are many. I can list them for you, or you could just trust me that they are many.
I'd be actually interested in some highlights as to why people can't graduate on a Friday.
Highlights include overlap with other area schools graduations, making availability of the PA system a non-starter. Availability of the venue where we host Project Graduation, which is the all-night party that is a sort of safe venue for students to celebrate, not available on Friday nights. There's more. Chairs are hard to come, like, there's tents. There's sort of a cascade of problems. And there's also just a robust history of having it on Thursdays, and some families have been assuming the date for some time now. It is almost 18 months in advance, so we could change it. I can move it to Friday. Those are the problems that we'll face if I do.
And then also, I think we mentioned, you mentioned this in EC, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we are well over our instructional minutes.
We are.
Always.
We are well over instructional minutes. We're required to build, just as a reminder, we're required to build in five full additional snow days, additional days for students in case of weather-related or other emergencies. We are over those five days with this version of the calendar. And the seniors are well over, Lebanon High School students are well over their required hours.
And MJ, we did have that conversation too, as if they did one of those days during December, so just came back from 22nd. And so, because we could have done two Right, so one day, we didn't know what the attendance would be in the value.
There were lots of options explored.
Are there any?
There are. There are two parent conference days that are early release for K to 8 only. And the final day of school is a half-day of school for all students. And they're, the hours are counted as such when I tally the hours.
So in the past, I think we've done the teacher conferences, like, early release on the Thursday, all day on the Friday. Are we doing two early release days?
No, I'm sorry, it will continue. Thursday is an early-release day. The Friday is no school for students, only in grades K to 8.
That's just not indicated on here, so we just need to put that language.
Yeah, we have not historically indicated that on the calendar there. It just says parent conference days, and then school leaders notify families that it's a half-day on Thursday and no school on Friday. The other thing I should mention is, once this passes forward, our team will create a much more visually appealing version of this that more closely resembles what you've seen in the past. And we have that template ready to go. It's labor-intensive to adjust days, while we're still debating when, the finer points of the calendar, so we're waiting to produce that until we finalize this. But it, in response to feedback, we're gonna make sure that it's printable in both black and white and color, and you can clearly see what the days, how the days are delineated.
So, so on our current calendar, it does, it's in the important dates.
Oh, it's in the important dates section.
Delineates the early release, yeah, that's the, that's what we've seen.
It's just on a symbol that's different, yes.
One of the other changes was from direct feedback from our parents asking us to move conferences earlier from December to October. That is the reflection from the back, from parents. They're hearing that they want to know sooner. Child is struggling. Commodate that.
Teachers now don't have to have kids on Halloween.
The way it worked out, yes. Parents will be appreciative, I maybe, I don't know.
Teachers will be too. Okay.
Any other questions about the development of this, or details?
No. Great. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Don't you love coming to have the calendar?
Okay, that moves us to 10E and some policies.
Okay, so let's see where we're at. So I'd like to make a motion to move the policies listed under 10, new business, E through L to a second reading.
Isn't L withdrawn?
Oh, I'm sorry, I put my line a little higher. I put my, yeah. So E through K.
All right, a motion to move E through K to second reading, second by Richard. Any comments on those?
The only thing that we're going to comment on, G, J Fab, we will probably see again. We're looking for some clarification. We felt it's important, we've made some modifications to the language from the last time that we saw it, and the, we are looking for some clarification around how to handle potential requests from families who are in our area agreement districts. So that may, it may show up again once we get clarification, but we wanted to at least get it updated so Amy can start using the new policy language.
Yeah, I think that's, I think the new policy language is clear. So that's good. It didn't seem like it was very clear, actually. So it made it much more clear. Yeah, it was good, good job. And we're supposed to see it again in April anyway, because the policy itself says we'll see it every April. So we haven't seen it before then, we'll need to see it in April. I'm looking at both of you. We haven't seen it before then, we'll need to see it in April again.
Looking at him.
Richard?
I'm still trying to convince you to sign.
I know, seriously.
I'll take a policy if it'll convince you to stay.
All right, all right. Any additional comments on any of those other policies? No? Okay, all those in favor of moving items E through K under 10 to a second reading? Yes, okay, unanimous, thank you.
So then I'll make a motion to move
Okay, we have a motion. Can I get a second? Second by Richard. Any additional questions? All right, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Okay, motion to accept the reviewed policy report by Wendy, second by Richard. Anything you wanna tell us about that? Nope, okay. Great. All those in favor? Excellent. Love it, okay? All right, we are moving back to public comment. Is there any public comment online?
If you would like to speak for public comment, please raise your hand online. There is no public comment online.
And there any public comment in the room? No?
Oh, I take it back, we have a public comment online.
Great.
One second, Faith.
Faith, are you there? Can you hear us?
Faith, I see you raised your hand. I'm gonna promote you to speak.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, she has texted, she says that it's hard to, anyway. Wendy's sound is dropping out, is what she's saying, so. Just FYI, her sound is dropping out. All right, great, thank you, Faith. Okay, so we'll close public comment. Brings us to committee updates. FNF will meet on February 10th at 4:15 PM at the SAU office. Policy committee met on January 13th. Anything else you wanna say about that? Nope, okay.
We're going to hopefully have the new agenda, maybe, on diligent community.
We'll aim for that, we'll see. Fingers crossed. Fingers crossed, okay. The next meeting is February 3rd at 8:15 AM at the SAU office. EC met on January 13th. Tia is not here. We've covered almost all the things that we talked about. We did have asked a lot of questions and talked about the ELA curriculum adoption, which we're gonna hear about later from the curriculum, curriculum team that made those choices. And have the agenda in front of you, what else did we talk about? John, what else did we talk about? Other important things that we cannot, that have no bearing on right now. So, it'll be fine. Let's see, our next meeting is tentatively February 3rd at 4:15 at the SAU. PNN's next meeting is to be determined. Student Wellness Advisory Committee met on January 8th. That is also Tia, we'll move on. The next meeting is May 7th at the SAU office. HACDC's next meeting is still to be determined. Area Committee's next meeting is February 27th at 6:00 PM at LMS here. The School District Task Force is meeting tomorrow, tomorrow, at 6:00 PM at City Hall. And the Housing Task Force, have you met since December 16?
January 27th.
January 27th, thank you. Excellent. Any future agenda items, boardman recommendations, or questions? Okay, so important dates and district announcement, well, board announcements, reminder that your board self-evaluations are due by February, by Valentine's Day, February 14th. You get them done early, you don't have to do them on Valentine's Day. You're right. And there's an additional email that I sent about those. And be sure to select year 24, 25. There is a drop-down menu that says 25, 25. That's not the year you want, that's not a real year. 24, 25 is the school year that you're looking for. So make sure you select that one. It didn't, but you were in the wrong one, so I've had to switch yours over. But yours is in 25, 25. So it didn't default. I know. I thought you did two, and then it went to a different place. It was moving over, so I'm just having everybody look. If it doesn't, if they all get shunted into the wrong place, it's a super eval problem, and I'll just move them all over. It just takes a couple of calls to people to fix it. So just look carefully, I know. We do, we try our best, all right. Okay, and district announcements. The filing period for the school district elected positions has opened as of today, and it will close on Friday, January 31st at 5:00 PM. The district offices will be open specifically on Friday, January 31st, between 3:00 and 5:00 PM for last-minute submissions. And we encourage people who are interested in serving on this wonderful board to please put your names in for candidacy. All people. Our deliberative session is Saturday, February 1st at 9:00 AM here at the gym. The snow date is February 3rd at 6:00 PM, also at the gym. Our next school board meeting is February 12th here at 6:30 PM. And the meet the candidate night for the people who sign up in the filing period is February 25th at 6:30 PM at the SAU auditorium.[1789.51]